We call our meeting to order. If I can get my agenda stringed out here. That's all right. Good evening and welcome to our June the 19th Board Meeting. My name is Kevin Collier. I represent the Riverbend Township and to my left is the Vice Chairman Jeff Ramsey. And I'm going to let the other Board members introduce themselves, starting to my right.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Terry Usri, Charable Township.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Dot Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Brad Moore, Craters Mountain Township.
Dot Cherry, Lawrence Manor.
Okay. Thank you and welcome to our Board Meeting. At this time, we're going to start with our invocation. I'm going to recognize Ms. Dot Guthrie.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, our hearts are so filled with Thanksgiving. For once again, you have allowed us to see the end of another successful school year. We thank thee, dear Father, for the love. We thank thee, dear Father, for the safety. We thank thee for the compassion and for the dedication shared throughout the school year. We thank thee, dear Father, for the many young people that marched across the fields to graduate. We thank thee for the parents that made the many sacrifices to make sure that their children were in a position to graduate. We thank you for the teachers, for their dedication, for the love and guidance shared in the classrooms. We thank thee for the safety that was provided throughout the district. And oh, Father, we know that without the love and dedication commitment of the Superintendent and his staff, none of that could have happened. So we thank thee, dear Father, for his leadership and vision for Gaston County Schools. We, as a Board, dear Father, are so grateful. And we want to be forever cognizant of the things that we need to do in order to move this district forward. We are so grateful, Father, and again, we say, "Thank you." We ask it all in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
If you'll stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next order of business is to adopt our agenda. Do I have an emotion to adopt our agenda as printed?
Motion.
A motion by Ms. Guthrie, second by Mr. Usri. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Mr. Booker, that brings us to good news.
Thank you, Mr. Collier, members of the Board. Tonight, we begin our good news recognition with our state champions in track and field. We have a bunch of record-breaking athletes with us. Several weeks ago, Bessemer City High School won another state title. You did hear me say "another," right? In the 4x200-meter relay race at the 1A Track and Field Championships. So if at this time, students Brianna Davis, Summer Meeks, Josiah Guthrie-Barber, and Kaziah DeGree could come forward, thank you all. They ran an amazing time of 1:46.30, which broke the school record set in 2004. These students' outstanding performance gives Bessemer City back-to-back state titles in the 4x200. And two of the young ladies were a member of the team last year. Is that not correct, Coach? So. Summer Meeks, a senior, signed a national letter of intent to run indoor and outdoor track at Lenora Ryan University. And we know she'll continue to represent our district well as she plays and runs track at Lenora Ryan. For a 4x200-meter relay competition for you. Summer. Brianna.
Y'all must be really fast. I love it. Congratulations. Congratulations. Way to go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, see Mark, what's his name? Congratulations. Way to go. Congratulations. 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 I see where Phelps is going to raise a shark. I wonder what they could raise.
Now, not to be outdone, Nazia Urban, are you with us tonight? Thank you. From East Gaston High School, is also a state 3A champion in the discus competition. To be a member of the state championship, she also earned county championship honors in shot put and discus. Was a conference champion in shot put and a regional champion in discus, also a regional runner-up in shot put. So we thank her for her support and her performance on behalf of Gaston County Schools. And she has with her Tim Reed, the Assistant Principal at East Gaston.
Mr. Reed, I'll be the plaque for the certificate of recognition for her state championship in Nation. I just want to, how far are you through it?
Uh, 122 feet and... I forgot how many inches.
Was that, that was your best, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's just amazing. I'm always in awe of athletes because an athlete I was not. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any names?
Oh, my sisters? Okay, cool.
I think she has some siblings that are here. Oh, yeah, you're getting a better picture too. I saw that face. Come on up. This is exciting.
How far are you through?
Uh, 122 feet.
What was your record performance?
Oh, like 108 or something.
Wow. Congratulations.
We have an excellent spring sports program and those two schools are great examples of what goes on on our athletic fields every day. We will shift from athletics to administration. I'd like to ask Glennis Brooks, our Executive Director of K-12 Instruction for Middle Schools, to come forward. This spring, the North Carolina Association for Middle Level Education recognized her for the Central Office Administrator to Watch Award. This award honors educational leaders who put an emphasis on academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, effective organizational structures and processes, and best practices. We are pleased that Ms. Brooks and all the work she has done to rejuvenate our approach to middle school education and the support she and her team have provided to our middle schools. And we believe you're beginning to see the difference in all that hard work. Now, the state is also taking notice of Ms. Brooks. We appreciate what you're doing, Glennis, and Ms. Guthrie, if you could join her down there to recognize her for this state honor. It is well-deserved and we are proud that you're a member of our senior leadership team, Glenn.
I am thrilled and honored at this time to be able to present this special plaque of recognition to you, Ms. Brooks. Because I know that in our community, that you have truly made a difference. Your impact has been successful and felt within our schools and the community. And we appreciate what you do every day and your dedication and commitment. So, on behalf of the Board, Chair, and the Board, we present this to you at this time. Thank you very much. Now would you greet the Board?
Ms. Brooks represents an executive director team that works long and hard. And it's great to see that other folks recognize what they're doing in our district. Tonight, I'd like to ask Brett Buchanan to come forward. He is our Director of Career and Technical Education. And he coordinates our Students at Work Program in partnership with the Gaston Regional Chamber of Commerce. You all will remember that this program didn't really exist several years ago, and it has grown each year. And this year, Mr. Buchanan likes to talk about what it means to have all eighth-grade students in Gaston County, 2,300 of them or more, move across this county to be paired with area businesses and organizations to let them see workplace facilities, hear from company representatives, and discuss the career options that exist here in our home county. So tonight, we have representatives from the business, and I'd like to allow Mr. Buchanan to recognize them and receive certificates.
Thank you, Superintendent Booker. It's my pleasure to introduce these businesses that allowed this wonderful opportunity to take place. Looking forward to extending that partnership into the future with educators and workplaces that will happen in July. A lot of these same businesses will participate. I'd also like to put a special thanks out to the Gaston Regional Chamber, Mr. Drury, Mr. McGlowen, for helping organize this and allowing it to happen, making those contacts. Without them, it wouldn't have been possible. At that time, we'd like to recognize the businesses and their associate representing.
Mr. Booker, may we have a Board member to help with the presentation?
Okay. From the Gaston Regional Chamber, Mr. Brad Drury. And Mr. McGlowen. From the City of Mount Holly, Mr. Danny Jackson. From the Gastonia Grizzlies, Mr. Austin Glasscocks. From Tindall Ford, Mr. Trevor Wright. From American Eford, Heather Johnson and Edgardo Lopez. From Duke Energy, Brent Dewitt. From Mann and Hummel, Scott Carter. From PSNC Energy, Libby Cox. From the Gaston Emergency Medical Services, Chief Mark Lampier. From Dixon Valve, Crystal McCabe. The Town of Stanley, Catherine Greeter. Pennix Construction, Ron Pantuso. From GSM Services, Ms. Donna Caskey. From UCS, Mr. Zach Schwartz. From Ferris Fab, Amy Bollinger. From the Gaston County Sheriff Department, Sheriff Alan Cloninger.
It's the sheriff's office.
From the sheriff's office.
I'll go stand back there in the back and miss the building.
Okay. PNC Bank, Mr. John Forgan. And from Firestone Fibers and Textiles, Ms. Brandy Wiley.
Mr. Buchanan, share a little bit of the details of what all went on that day.
This opportunity allowed all of our eighth-grade students across all of our 11 middle schools, as the Superintendent mentioned, a little over 2,300 students, to go out and visit local businesses and really just to gain some career exposure. At this age in students' lives, they really don't know what is out there and what's available. We have a lot of wonderful businesses out there, opportunities available, and starts them at a younger age, see what's available to them when thinking about high school, college, and beyond. Beyond, where can those skill sets be used locally? So we really appreciate everything you've done and offered to our students. We value that and look forward to strengthening that and improving it in the future.
And also, I'd like to add that it takes great teachers, great parents, great administrators, but it also takes great community leaders and business people to make those successes. And you are a prime example of one of the reasons we are so successful. Thank you so much.
See, I echo what Mr. Dedman said. This Board commissioned a blue-ribbon panel of business leaders to come in and talk about career and technical education. And one of the things that that panel said was, "You're waiting too late to engage children in career planning." And so part of their vision was that we would do more in our middle schools. Well, we can't make that happen without businesses like you affording us the opportunity to bring our children. So we appreciate so much you opening your doors and allowing them to be a part of that because that's the way we're going to grow our workforce and let them know all the great opportunities in our community. So we thank you very much for that. We ought all scoot forward.
We probably should scoot forward.
No, y'all stay put. We're coming up from y'all.
Thank you so much for what you do. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you for giving our children the experience. Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you do.
Chairman, members of the Board, this is one example of many partnerships that we have in our community. But a longstanding partnership that is quite a gift to our students is the work that the Gaston County Dental Society does. They partner with many agencies to sponsor "Give a Kid a Smile Day", which provides free dental checkups for our children. This year, six dental practices provided free oral health care, including exams, cleanings, fluoride treatments, and sealants for students in need of dental care. These six practices, had they charged for these services, it would have exceeded $16,000. Additionally, dental sealant programs were conducted at Bessemer City and Greer Middle Schools, serving more than 60 children with dental care needs. The service at these two schools exceeded $49,000 in value. So if you do some quick math, you can see we approached $65,000 in free dental care provided because of the generosity of people that we're about to introduce you to. So, if I could ask Dr. Susan Stover, Dr. Jenna Stover, Dr. Sunny Okarosi, Dr. Jonathan Blow, and a person who does just yeoman work, Lynn Cook. Is she with us tonight? There she is. She is with the Gaston County Health Department and coordinates all of this work and does a great job for us. Also, the following dentists were involved in this program but couldn't be with us. But it's worthy to recognize their work. Dr. Andrew Oblinger, Dr. Doug Stover, Dr. Travis Nixon, Dr. Richard Dunning, and Dr. Stephanie Lowry. They made a significant contribution to our schools, and we want to know how much that we appreciate this. And a thank you probably doesn't adequately say what you have done for our community. And Ms. Cook, it is always a pleasure. Thank you for your service. Members of the Board, you may have heard Ms. Cook say that getting them to come get recognition for all our hard work is like pulling teeth from them, so... Mr. Collier, that concludes the good news for this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. The next item on our agenda is public expression. We have a couple speakers that have signed up tonight. Before I recognize them, I'd like to make some comments. Citizens, if you will, when you come to make comments, I will recognize you by name. And when you come to the microphone, if you'll state your name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The members of the Board do not respond to public expression during public expression. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. The Chair shall rule on all points on the order during public expression. The first speaker I have is Mr. Richard Franks.
Richard Franks, 1022 Canada Drive, Dallas, North Carolina. Apologize for my voice being a little cracky. I'm a little nervous here. I want to thank Mr. Superintendent and the Board for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight representing my younger brother, Alan Franks, and my nephew, Nathan Franks. It's my understanding, they're out of town on family holiday. That's why they're not here. It's my understanding tonight, you guys are going to be voting on allowing transfer students to participate in athletics instead of sitting out a year. My younger brother's already had one son have to sit out a year at North Gaston. And my nephew Nathan is going to be a freshman at North Gaston. And he's supposed to go to Bessemer City. He went to William C. Friday, his three years of middle school. He's been with that class. Bessemer City is the school that he is supposed to attend, like I stated. He is very active in soccer, very active in wrestling. He has a very bright future in those two sports. And it's my underst- And it's my understanding as of Friday afternoon that Bessemer City will not field a boys soccer team in the fall, they will not field a wrestling team in the winter. So I'm just asking the board to please consider passing this resolution that will allow students that transfer, and I'm asking for all students, but it is a personal thing, asking for my nephew and my brother that they be allowed to, or my nephew be allowed to participate in sports in this fall, and also because the school that he's supposed to attend will not have the two programs that he actively participates in. So I do appreciate your time and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Rebecca Schwendeman.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Schwendeman, 4066 Belmeet Circle. I have one child in South Point, and we just, going into South Point, and we just graduated one, and that is in Belmont, I'm sorry, Belmont. There are four items on the, that are action items this evening that I want to ask questions about, the Latin honors, it's not clear whether you will retain the valedictorian and salutatorian awards. I have sent emails to most of you, soon as I saw this, soon as the agenda came out, and the only response I received was from Mr. Howell, he's on a mission trip, and he said it was his understanding that those would be going away, and want to, that you make sure that you know what you're voting for and that the public knows that you're taking something away from our children, an accomplishment, something to strive for. I don't think you should be taking things away from them. I'm not even sure if you have class rank anymore, but I remember that I was like fourth in my class, and my niece was a valedictorian, but I don't have any children who are up in the upper echelon like that, so it's not about me, it's just about taking things away from the kids, and everyone gets a trophy sort of thing. I understand that you had magna and summa cum laude, and that you've already started this program, and I don't understand why you can't have both. Why would you take something away? But if I'm mistaken, please, please clear that up and make sure you know what you're voting for. And as far as out-of-state and county tuitions, item number 14 that you're voting on, could you explain, there was a discussion about, on one of the news networks, so people are concerned about that, why we have students from other counties and states that are attending here when we have issues like the making sports teams and things like that, and crowding, and where we're over capacity at some of the schools, why we're bringing in other students. The summer renovation projects, item 16, we just gave our chairman, our supervisor, and some more authority to, up to $100,000, I think, for construction projects and without board approval, and now you're giving them more authority over the summer to approve summer renovations and constructions without board approval. And I don't know why we have a board if you're not going to oversee those, the money items which are important. On the consent agenda, item 17, I think, page 45, sole sourcing of a flooring for one of the schools, I think it was North Gaston, why is that, you're having a sole source? I know that's allowed in some cases, but clarify why that is. And the last thing that I have is the survey, I mean, the land purchase. I read the appraisal, and the survey was only on half of the property because of, there was some deal that fell through to sell part of the land, so we're buying an excess of land, more than we need, just like we did at Kramer, repeating the same mistakes that we made before, in my opinion. So if, do you have only, a survey on only half of it, environmental is only half of the property, or have you since gone back and gotten survey and environmental on the entire property? We have a lot of, and there was also the road issue, I think, I've heard that that's been resolved, but I'm not sure how that works, I've heard different things. I heard that Belmont said it's resolved, you won't have to pay for a road, but then I have a communication from, is that it? Communication from Commissioner Worley that says that there will be legislation that will make the DOT, the state, have to pay for the road, so I'm not sure, make sure that you know, and that the public knows what's going on with that. Thank you so much.
And that concludes our public expression. Next item on our agenda is the curriculum and instruction committee reports. I'm going to recognize Mr. Ushery for that update.
Mr. Chairman, the instructional committee met on May the 9th at 4:30. The majority of our committee agreed that the window, the transfer window for athletics should be the same for in and out-of-county students, and a recommendation will be presented to the full board as an action item. Cheerleading is considered a special program and will not be included in this recommendation. The Department of Exceptional Children is working on a behavior support plan for the upcoming 17, 18 academic year. Each principal will have a point of contact on the behavior support team. The team will offer support for general education, 504 plans, and for exceptional children. DEC is working to offer additional support to the schools that have a significant number of specialized classrooms. Title II and Title III are federally funded programs that support all of our schools. Title II programs support professional development, teacher recruitment, curriculum facilitators, and the teacher induction program for success. Title III programs supports the district's strategic plan for English learners and provides professional development for those teachers. Plans for these programs will be submitted in late summer or early fall. This recommendation will be presented to the full board as an action item on the consent agenda. For the graduating class of 2019, the committee would like to continue the use of the terms valedictorian and salutatorian, and initiate a new GCS recognition program for students with these designations. A recommendation will be presented to the full board as an action item. Professional development will be provided for teachers in July in elementary, middle, and high school levels. The elementary level will offer the Homegrown Institute. The middle school level will have training for the Gaston Virtual Academy, and the high school level will provide professional development with Dr. Allan November. We adjourned our meeting at 5:45 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Ushery. Are there any questions from the rest of the board? Seeing none, I'm going to recognize the operations committee. Mr. Moore, I believe you're going to present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The operations committee met on Friday, June the 9th, at 2017, at 12 o'clock PM here in the central office boardroom. Our committee included Mr. Howell, Mr. Dedman, Mr. Ramsey, and myself. The following staff members were present at our meeting. Morgan Hushard, Gary Hoskins, Jeff Booker, Sierra Ray, Frank Fields, Curtis Poplin, and Cindy Matson. Our agenda included the following items. Ashbrook High School leadership presented and asked for approval to name the cross-country trail, the Alfred Hess Cross Country Trail, in honor of Coach Al Hess. The technology department proposed a plan for a new cellular phone contract. Andy LaRoe from Eticon Energy explained the new energy management program that will be developed and used by the energy managers and the facilities department. We were updated on the plan of Phase 2 of the McAtaville renovation project included is paving, curbing, sidewalks, drop ceiling, and lighting in the hallways. Frank Fields, the director of school nutrition, presented the 2017, 2018 procurement plan, the food supply, beverage, and ice cream bids for the annual report for the 2016, 2017 year. Some employees from DEC will be moving to the farce, will be moving to farce heights so that they will have, have office space. We just discussed sole source providers to work on the flooring in auxiliary gym at North Gaston. Change orders were presented for Pleasant Ridge and Stanley Middle School construction projects. Our next meeting will take place in July 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any questions for Mr. Moore of the operations committee? All right, seeing none, moving to the next item on the agenda is student recognition for Latin honors. Dr. Balknight.
I'd like to invite Mr. Montgomery up to the podium. Good evening, board members, Chairman Collier, Mr. Booker. Thank you so much for allowing us to share information on this item. We have worked with the board and committee for several months on this item, and we are now ready to present what we believe will be our final recommendation to the board for action this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Balknight, Mr. Booker, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is our pleasure to once again come before you. We feel very good about the recommendation that's being brought forth, and a really robust effort to receive input from a variety of stakeholders, and so tonight, we're here to give you an update and ask to move forward with this recommendation. Just as general reminders of where we started, remember that the state of North Carolina has equaled the weight for grade point averages with respect to CCP honors and advanced placement course offerings, beginning with the current rising junior class, so the class of 2019. Valedictorian, salutatorian recognizes the top-ranked senior in the graduating class, and salutatorian, the second-highest grade point average in that class as well. Remember, it is very important to remember that we do more than any other district in the state of North Carolina that we researched already. So we use weighted and unweighted grade point averages, meaning that we recognize students who want to go above and beyond and take the more rigorous course offerings with weighted grade point averages, fairness and consistency for all students, a personalized graduation ceremony, which I will show you in just a moment, and of course, other school districts and LEAs procedures across the state. Reminders that we do not have a single, all 12 schools that allow valedictorian and salutatorian to speak, so we allow a little bit of a box that has some flexibility to allow each community to recognize itself and to honor itself as well. But we have superintendent, all the way to Dr. Skinner at Gaston College, which speaks traditionally at that graduation ceremony, to a variety, as you can see on the slide here. So we have a variety of things that go on, as it should. We updated this particular slide to include the graduating class of 2017, and you can tell, out of 11 graduating schools, we had 24, so we only had one tie for vail, one tie for sail, for this past couple of weeks. We already have Latin honors. As a general reminder, when we started several months ago, most school districts that are making this change have gone away from valedictorian, salutatorian, and adopted Latin honors. We already have been doing that for years and years and years. But you can see with praise, 3.7 to 399 is what we currently use, and then with great praise on the magna, at 4.0 to 4299, and of course, 4.3 and higher is summa cum laude. Our recommendations in working with a lot of stakeholder groups is to continue the use of basically what we currently have. We want to continue use of Latin honors and other recognitions such as academic scholars, the CTE credentials, and a number of things. You may see that in chords and other varieties of recognition, but we want to continue those things. We also met with principals last week and had no issue with them with designated seating at graduation ceremonies for valedictorian, salutatorian, which most already do anyway. And then, we want to use a small group out of our high school principals to develop a study group, if you will, that will develop a process for graduation speakers. We have no feedback from them on the negative side, where if it was one vail and one sail, or even two and two, just continue the current practice. It's where we get into the likelihood of multiple at various schools, that we want to have a fair process in place across our district. And of course, we want to continue the words valedictorian, salutatorian recognition at the school level, that may be at an academic honors program or something of that nature. We'll be more than happy to entertain questions.
Questions from the board. Ms. Roberts.
Could you back the slide up one, please? What was the last statement you made about the valedictorian, salutatorian?
Last bullet.
Recognition at school level, so are you saying you're asking for them not to be recognized? I want to make sure everyone's clear on this. Not to be recognized at graduation?
No, we're saying do as much recognition as possible. It's just a way to manage if we have three, four, five.
So like we've been doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Just making sure that was clear. Thank you.
A point of clarity there, what you're saying is, we could have as many as six speakers because of a three and three tie. And so we're just trying to look at a fair way and get the students involved and the parents a way that they decide who the speakers will be without all six students having to speak. Is that what we're saying?
That is correct. As Mr. Montgomery illustrated, some of our schools already do not use the valedictorian, salutatorian as their speakers. So we don't want to change their practices at their school. As you know, the great thing about Gaston County is we're made up of townships, so we want to keep the culture in each township. So that's why he'll pull a small group of principals to develop a framework that all the high school principals will utilize to be consistent. But we believe that this will provide all of our high schools additional ways to recognize valedictorians, salutatorians, because all the feedback from all the stakeholders, that is important to Gaston County, so we're not going to move away from those terms. We're going to utilize both.
More questions or comments? Seeing none, this is an action item. I need a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Dedman, second by Ms. Guthrie. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yeah.
And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Dr. Balknight.
Yes, sir. I will invite Mr. Duncan up to the podium for the next item. I'm sorry, Mr. Collier. I've gotten ahead of myself.
Dr. Balknight, if you'll stay there, the next, the next item is athletic transfers. This too is an action item, board.
Yes, sir. I'll invite our athletic director, Mr. Chad Duncan, up to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Balknight. Good evening, Board of Education, Chairman Collier, Mr. Booker. This presentation on athletic transfers, it's going to involve these three subjects, in-county, out-of-county, and LEA-to-LEA transfers. And please remember, LEA is Gaston County schools, but another LEA example is Cleveland County schools, Lincoln County, but it's also going to be the charter school by itself. So that's an LEA all to itself. The current High School Athletic Association policy, very wordy, but it's, it's right there. To give a brief summary of that is this next slide. The student athlete must sit out 365 days if they transfer from one member school to another member school, and this is going to be absent the bona fide move, okay? The, absent the bona fide change of address, okay? Our current Gaston County schools transfer policy, 4316, is also with you. And a brief summary of that, the student athlete must sit out 365 days unless a waiver is granted, or there's a renewal of an out-of-county transfer from a middle school to a high school. And I'll have some scenarios here in just a second. Those possible waivers are these five. It could be medical, health-related, a specified requirement of the social services or the court system, student protection, the student is a child of a school employee, and it could be a possible sibling, their older sibling attends the school. So those are the possible waivers. The revised transfer rule from the High School Athletic Association came in an email to all the schools' athletic directors. So they received this, and it's also on the, the High School Athletic Association website. That summary is basically this. The student's first transfer after starting ninth grade is not subject to the High School Athletic Association transfer rule if, and this is from... Athletic Association transfer rule if, and this is from LEA-to-LEA, if both LEAs agree to the transfer. So again, that would be Gaston County Schools to Cleveland, or a charter school. For any transfer thereafter, the student must sit out two consecutive semesters, or 365, whichever's less. So if they went from Gaston County Schools to Cleveland County and then came back, the second time they transferred from Cleveland back to Gaston County, they'd have to sit out for 365, basically. And cheerleading is not a part of this, because according to the High School Athletic Association, it is known as a special program. I got some scenarios now. First, in-county. An example, student athlete attends WC Friday on a transfer, wants to continue to North Gaston on a transfer, but they live in Bessemer City's district. Our board policy currently states that they must sit out 365, and therefore, they cannot participate in athletics until 10th grade at North Gaston. And that's if student assignment, they're given that transfer because they qualify. Now, the High School Athletic Association refers to the LEA, so Gaston County Schools, to decide on where they start ninth grade. Out-of-county transfer scenario. Student athlete lives out-of-county, but has paid to transfer to Chavis Middle School for all of their middle school years, and now wants to continue to pay for a transfer to Cheriville High School. According to our current board policy, this states that they can participate starting their freshman year, because it's known as a renewal transfer in our board policy, 4316. Another scenario is also going to be related to LEA-to-LEA. Student athlete attends a Gaston County School in ninth grade, decides to transfer to another LEA in 10th grade. If GCS and the other LEA agree to the transfer, the student can participate in 10th grade as soon as they start. If they do not agree, so there's a disagreement, the student can transfer, but they'd have to then sit out for two semesters, okay? Now, this is also going to apply if the transfer is from the LEA back to Gaston County Schools. So it would go both ways. There's also a possibility that this could actually happen during a season. So an example would be, they could play football for basically two schools. So they could start at one of our schools and then want to get a transfer to a charter or an outside county, and if both of them agree, they could actually play. Right now, they could play Friday for this school and then go to another school and play the next Friday.
We'd have to agree to that, right?
We would have to agree to that, all right? Now, this also is going to be, let's say there is a disagreement by one of the parties, this can go to an appeal committee with the High School Athletic Association, all right? And they will decide that. So again, our current transfer policy, 4316, so you have that. And then, what we recommend, revise our board policy to reflect all student athletes must sit out 365 if they're on a transfer and have not satisfied one of those five waivers. And this is obviously going to be except cheerleading. And also, to revise the board policy to reflect that no student athlete can transfer to another LEA or to Gaston County Schools from another LEA and then participate immediately. And do you have any questions?
I have some, but I'll let the board go first. Ms. Roberts.
Okay, I have a couple. If both LEAs have to agree, do we have any guidelines that the LEAs must go by?
I'm sorry.
If there's a transfer and both LEAs have to agree, are there guidelines that we have to go through, or we just say yes or no?
What I've been told from the High School Athletic Association is they're going to send something out similar to a Google Doc, and it's going to say, let's say, one of our kids wants to go to somewhere else. It would come to us first, and then we would say agree or disagree, and then it would go to them, and then they would say agree or disagree. If one of us has disagree on the paper, the Google Doc, then it comes back to them. And then, it's up to the student, athlete, and their family, and possibly the new place that they transfer to, to then take it to the High School Athletic Association for an appeal.
Okay. And you had mentioned this applies with the exception of cheer. So if a student transfers now, they don't get 365?
For cheerleading?
For cheer. They can participate.
They can, as long as they're on, we know where they're going to go, the transition list, that we know where they're going.
Okay.
So they can try out for basically three different schools.
Okay, I have something, Mr. Collier.
All right, Mr. Dedman.
Right now, if I'm Dr. Bocknight and I have transferred into North Gaston, or to WC Friday, I'm not going to be allowed to play in the ninth grade, 365 days. But if I pay to go into North Gaston, I can play. Is that correct?
If you, do you live in-county?
No, if I have a legal transfer in there, I can play.
Yes, but do you live in-county or out-of-county?
It could be out-of-county, based on what you said.
Well, the current policy, if you lived out-of-county and you paid to go to middle school at WC Friday.
You're automatically grandfathered in.
You're automatically grandfathered in.
Mr. Uster is almost getting me convinced that we might as well let our in-county transfers do the same thing. I could be persuaded.
I want to be clear, on your previous slide, Gaston County's policy is to not allow transfers from LEA to LEA.
That's correct.
So we are not going to participate in agreeing to letting students transfer from LEA to LEA. And that also comes if they're trying to transfer in or transfer out. Our default by our policy is no, we will not allow it. Is that correct?
That's what we recommend.
That's our recommendation.
Even though the state says it's okay?
The state says the first transfer, they would say yes.
Okay.
They would allow it. But in talking to Q. Tucker from the High School Athletic Association, if it's a rising senior and they apply for a transfer, they're going to investigate it because they believe it's solely for athletic purposes, and they don't believe that that is, should be permitted at all.
Well, I agree, and I've seen this go on years and years ago, and I can see a scenario. We're so close to the state that you can allow a transfer for a state championship game in South Carolina, and then allow the transfer back for a state championship game in North Carolina. And that begins a very slippery slope. When you start opening up transfers carte blanche, because you start getting teams that don't represent a school and community, you start getting an all-star team. And that's what I don't want to... Mr. Booker and I both played baseball through college and high school, and I don't want to see those kind of games being played, to try to win championships. So there are waivers that I agree with, and there are exceptions that I agree with as well. But just to transfer, to load up a team, displace a child who has been on a team because you're trying to win a championship is something I think we should avoid in high school sports. And I agree with the recommendation for the policy because of that, and I'd rather be known as harder to deal with between LEAs, kind of sticking to what our 365 policy started years and years ago, and the state started, came on after we did. So any other questions or comments? Ms. Cherry.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question. Mr. Duncan, tell me if I'm understanding this right. Where I see a loophole would be with these families that pay to come in, because they could go to any school, which means they could play right off the bat. And that would be a loophole that they could load up a team, like you're saying, Mr. Collier, and we would have no recourse. Am I understanding that correctly?
That would be, they would have to have gone through middle school and paid in middle school, and then did the same thing in high school.
But that's still a loophole, right?
Well, that's not our recommendation, though, now. That is the way it has been in the previous 4316.
Our recommendation is to be consistent across the district, whether you're an in-county transfer or an out-of-county, that you're treated the same, and you would sit out your freshman year in high school. That is our recommendation.
Okay. Can you speak to that, Dr. Bocknight?
Our recommendation is to be consistent, whether it's an in-county transfer or an out-of-county transfer, students would sit out 365 their freshman year.
Okay, I'm talking about the people that pay from out-of-county.
Yes, ma'am. If they pay from out-of-county to go to Cheriville High School, because there's capacity there, we do have that, people enroll there, they would wait 365 days before they could participate in sports.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Cherry, that's what I was trying to clarify. The new state policy allows that, but Gaston County's policy is not going to. That is the proposal tonight.
Okay, I'm with you, Mr. Collier.
Ms. Roberts.
Wasn't it also stated, though, that what the state is recommending, that it can't be purely for athletics, though? Correct?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll speak to that, because I do student assignment. It is never, should never be for athletics, but we often find that that is the purpose for the transfer, as Mr. Collier stated. But even the High School Athletic Association said that when they're a senior, they're probably not going to approve it, because there's no good reason to move a child your senior year. But we find all the time that sometimes families move for they're not starting on this team, but to Mr. Collier's point, the child that's grown up in that community, they could lose their position on the team if we allow children to move for athletic purposes.
What if the example that was given earlier, one school doesn't have that sport? They said it couldn't purely be for athletics, but do they allow that? What does the state say about that?
The state would rely on the school to have the funds to provide the equipment for the sport, and then it would be up to the school to provide the athletic sport. But one of the reasons why we really hold the transfer policy tight is so that if children go to school in their attendance area, then the school would have enough children to make a team. But when they transfer to schools that have better football programs or a soccer program, then that sometimes will cause another school to not be able to have enough students to have the program at that school.
You had mentioned consistency earlier, and that was one of my issues as well. It seems like we normally go along with the state, and now we're not. So to me, that seems a bit inconsistent, so that's my only issue.
Any other questions or comments? Excuse me, seeing none, this is an action item, so I'll need a motion to adopt. Motion by Ms. Guthrie, a second by Ms. Cherry. Any more comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. We have four. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And those opposed, raise your hand. We have two against. Do you have that, Ms. Clerk? Okay, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Dr. Bocknight. Next item on our agenda is the school nutrition annual budget, annual report, I'm sorry. Mr. Hoskins.
Members of the board, Superintendent Booker. I've got Mr. Frank Fields here with us. He is the Director of School Nutrition, and he will be presenting the annual report, which he gives every time this year. So with that, I'll introduce Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins, Chairman Collier, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on our 2016-17 school nutrition operations. Let me bring this up. I'd like to take this opportunity to cover a few topics, both in terms of our performance and our operations this year, and also to inform the board of some things that'll be coming down the road, both in a legislative and an operational perspective. The first slide will show you that our participation and sales of supplemental items have, over the past three years, been impacted somewhat by the standards of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, as they've come into play. We saw a slight decrease in breakfast last year, but this year, that rebounded nicely, serving almost 9,000 breakfasts a day, and that's an all-time high for us. We did see a continuing decline in our lunch participation. We're still in excess of 20,000 meals per day at all grade levels. A good part of that participation, of course, is still being driven by our CEP schools with universal breakfast and lunch. And this is certainly a concern. We feel that it's quite a bit impacted somewhat by the paid lunch equity, which requires a 10-cent increase on meal prices, and we've been able to not have to do that this year. So this year, meal prices will remain the same. We did not need to come to the board for a change in that, for the paid lunch. That, along with, we're going to do a campaign of trying to promote our school meals with the students and also the school staff, and we're going to seek some input from our leadership at the school level about what we could do better to help entice students to have school lunch. We think it's still a great deal and a well-balanced meal. We're just going to find a way to create a little more excitement, we feel like, in this coming year. So hopefully, we can turn this trend around moving forward and have better news on the paid lunch and all lunches for next year. And then, our supplemental sales, which is the extra items we sell, again, they've been impacted by the type of products we can offer, and we are going to also seek from our colleagues at other LEAs, other school systems, school nutrition departments, what's working and what doesn't, and continue to strive to find items that our students are happy with and that will purchase. It is an important part of our budget. In terms of charged meals, we do allow students to do charging, so that every student will get something to eat in the lunchroom. Our default position, of course, is always that a child will be provided some sort of nourishment if they don't have money. The number fluctuates year to year, and it's actually come down a little bit from this figure from this year since school ended. It's down close to right at $21,000. That's less than $1 per child, and when you put it in perspective, and when you look at some other LEAs that doesn't have the program of cooperation that we have with our principals and the rest of our school staff, that number is quite a bit higher in some districts. And do anticipate even some more collections through the remainder of this summer, so we will continue to strive to keep that and manage that number. In terms of general finances, our operating balance continues to rebound. We have a pretty good financial picture right now, and I feel like it'll continue to improve. We've realized some competitive pricing by joining the North Carolina Procurement Alliance this past year. That's the major driver of our food and beverage bids, and we were very pleased for a first run, and we've renewed our participation in that. There is no cost to participate for our school district, and it has comprised the alliance of about 96 LEAs. So a majority of the school districts in the state are participating, and it gives a tremendous amount of purchasing power. And we're doing, we were very pleased with it and think we'll be doing even better next year. Another part of that is that we've found the opportunity to do some other storage options instead of strictly renting warehouse space by engaging our distributor partners to warehouse some of our products and distribute them on an as-needed basis, and that has given us some good cost savings there. So that's been really good news for us, and it's a direct result of the alliance, because that's part of their terms and conditions for their general state bid. In terms of what's going on in child nutrition and school nutrition nationally, the most recent Congress before the election this past fall had actually approved a Senate Agriculture, Nutrition, and Forestry Committee approved a child nutrition reauthorization called the Integrity and Access Act of 2016. And the House Committee on Education and Workforce, which is responsible for reauthorization, had approved a bill called the Child Nutrition Education Act, and no action was taken by the full House or the full Senate. And once the Congress expired and recessed for the year, any bills that were approved by committee were then null. were then null, and so basically, the Congress will have to take this up again in this session. It doesn't seem that it's a burning issue to move forward on a quick level, but at some point, they will. That being the case, we'll continue to operate under the direction of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010, with some modifications to the regulatory requirements that USDA is responsible for. And what that will be is they've basically shifted any of the changes, any of further implementation of even lower sodium standards, more dependence or offering of 100% whole grains, they've put that into neutral, and basically said, stand in place, what you've worked with that we brought to you, we're starting to get some positive results. On childhood obesity, there is some studies that say we're starting to make an impact on that, and also, we've adjusted operationally so that we're starting to rebound as, from a financial perspective. So the former Senator Sonny Perdue, who's now the Secretary of Agriculture, has always been a supporter of school nutrition, and his position has been, let's put it into status quo for now until the next bill comes through and is approved by Congress, and at which point, we will probably have some other changes. So there's very little, that you'll see different than we do this year moving forward, at least as mandated by Congress, and we are currently compliant with all the regulations. One item that I did want to bring to your attention, the budget is in the legislature right now, and I think the final versions are probably being hammered out as we speak. There was a provision in the North Carolina Senate's version of the budget bill that would reclassify how students or how children, families, receive SNAP benefits. SNAP is the Supplementary Nutritional Assistance Program, formerly known as food stamps. We have a tremendous number of students in Gaston County and the state of North Carolina who were qualified under certain provisions of SNAP that allow their eligibility and other programs to transfer over. Also, we use their eligibility in SNAP as a part of our qualifier for free meals, that's what we call direct certification. If these eligibility requirements are changed, it could result in a lot of families losing this benefit and not being able to directly certify for free or reduced-priced meals, which would mean they would have to go back into the separate application process for free and reduced. We are afraid that that could result in some folks not getting the benefits that they would normally have been able to receive, and it would also impact our ability to evaluate eligibility for CEP because that is the basis by which this program is qualified. So we did reach out, both the School Nutrition Association and folks within the child nutrition programs, to our legislatures. I did the legislative group from Gaston County, emailed them my concerns, and got responses that this is something that is being, is heard, it's being considered, they got a lot of feedback on this, and hopefully, it will not be included in the final budget version. So that is something we're looking forward to in the next day or so, hopefully. In terms of our departmental positives, again, great, strong participation at the community eligibility provision in 19 schools. Our software upgrade, which the board approved last year, was a very successful transition. We had a great first year on a new technology, and that's a word you probably don't hear a lot of times, a great first year on a new technology, but we're very satisfied with the performance of Meals Plus. It's allowed us to do some streamlines, some operational financial information in terms of getting financials into our county system, it interfaces, it works perfectly, and we're very satisfied. We'll be going into the next level of inventory management this coming year, and don't anticipate any problems. We're also going to be introducing online free and reduced meal applications for the first time here in the county. We will still offer the paper form to all students at the beginning of school, but the quicker we can get people qualified, the better it is for the students and for our program, so we think that's going to be a real positive and step forward for us. We've also done some revamping in our central production area, we've started adding or making our prepared salads and veggie packs and combo entrees, and we feel like that this has helped keep our staff busy and employed and doing good things for the students of Gaston County in a time when some of the items we used to make are no longer available, we can't do the cookies, we can't do the brownies, but we can still do some other good foods, and we're very proud of the way our staff has stepped up at the central kitchen and embraced this change, and not just embraced it, but, you know, really performed, they did a great job, and I would like to also mention a thank you to all of our cafeteria managers and cafeteria workers, they're the ones that make this happen, they are there every day for the kids and do an outstanding job, as well as the staff at the central kitchen and our supervisors, and I'd like to acknowledge, of course, Karen Berry, you're our Assistant Director, who came tonight, and she does great work in helping keep things organized in the schools. Mentioned the Procurement Alliance as being a great thing for us. Also, we're expanding our My Payments Plus program that we've used for managing meal accounts for parents where they can make deposits online, and we're going to bring in the school fee module in a partnership with finance, so that parents will be able to have a one-stop shop, basically, to pay school fees, put money on their child's cafeteria account, manage all that, and our partner, Meals Plus, is responsible for managing that program, and based on what they've done so far, I think they'll do a great job. Our menu this past year, we went to a peanut and tree nut-free menu, we created a muncha lunch, little combo meal, to take the place of that, and fortunately, we were able to realize 1,500 to 1,800 units a day of this muncha lunch meal. It's something that little kids particularly like, it's just kind of a fun lunch, and so we've had great response on that. Our fresh fruit and vegetable program grants for nine participants in school year 17, and we anticipate renewing most of those. And then summer feeding this year, got off to a roaring start this past week, we had over 70 sites enrolled, that's an all-time high, and we had over 3,000 and over 2,600 lunches and breakfasts served to children of Gaston County last week, and those are all-time highs, so very pleased about that, and again, great credit goes to Karen and her staff who organized that. And then finally, about summer feeding, we have a cell phone app that Mr. Higgins helped us get on the Gaston County school website, so you can find the text to the number and put in your zip code, and it will tell you the closest summer feeding site, not only in Gaston County, but in any county in the state. So this is a partnership between the Department of Public Instruction and the school nutrition programs, and it's, I tried it, and it worked, so I was very pleased to see that. In terms of our challenges, certainly, we've mentioned declining lunch participation and how we want to try to address that and turn that number around. Always increases, particularly in benefit and insurance costs, ongoing replacement and upgrade of equipment. We had four cafeteria managers retire this year, and we're constantly seeking to develop and train their replacements, and fortunately, we had a good class of trainees this year. We anticipate doing the same again next year as well. And then, of course, the uncertainty about what's going to be coming down the road, it's hard to make long-term plans when you don't know the rules and the regulations that you're going to be dealing with, but we get good guidance from our partners at the Department of Public Instruction to keep us abreast as much as they can, so we feel good going into this year anyway. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to entertain those.
Any questions or comments from the board?
We can't make our own cookies and brownies anymore, is that correct?
We can make them, but we don't really have the recipes, they're held in secret by the big companies now, it's a little beyond our, we've tried, but the items we made just weren't as acceptable as some of the things. We do put a cookie out there, but we buy a dough product.
What happened to the recipe that belonged to the Gaston County schools? Because we did have such, at one time I had.
Oh, I still got those recipes, they just won't let me give them to the kids anymore.
So we still do have the recipe for the oatmeal cookie?
We still have the recipe for the oatmeal cookie.
Well, good, if you can't give it to the children, I'd like to have it because I lost my confidence.
We can work that out.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Fields, thank you very much, that was a lot of information tonight.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is the 2017-2018 budget update. Mr. Hoskins, this is information.
Thank you, Chairman Collier, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. As we approach the end of our fiscal year, which is coming on June 30th, we just want to provide a budget update. Going through the calendar, after this presentation, we will be asking that you adopt a balanced interim budget, that's in accordance with state law, and we'll talk about that a little bit after this presentation. Sometime in, looks like maybe July, the General Assembly and the Governor will approve the state budget. Of course, the Governor had their budget, the House has presented a budget, and the Senate has presented a budget, and I believe the Senate and the House have just, as we have been meeting tonight, have come to reconciliation on the provisions in that budget, so I'll probably go through that a little bit quickly since I'm not sure what those are at this point. And at some time, probably August, September, we will be asking for a final budget resolution. As far as the state update, and like I said, I'll just hit the highlights here, the state House and the state Senate all have a lot of similarities in that they are, they have increases for teacher salaries, they are looking to adjust the principal pay scale, they're looking to adjust the assistant principal pay scale and make it easier to understand and more streamlined. On the negative, they also both are cutting some central office allotments, I think the House is cutting by 5% and the Senate by 10%, so they'll probably meet somewhere in the middle, and they also are limiting our flexibility that we have. As I've mentioned in the past, we get a lot of different buckets of funding from the state, and they give us flexibility, or at least in the past, to move money from one bucket to another to adapt to the needs of our county and our students. They're sort of taking some of that flexibility away, so we'll see what they have in store for us after this meeting. And they have also, both have provisions for addressing the salaries for non-certified or central office personnel. I think the House has a $1,000 increase, and the Senate has the greater of 750 or 3% or something like that, so again, that's another positive, and both of them have increases in employer-paid benefits. As you know, they will cover the portion of that increase on state-paid employees, we will have to cover that increase on the portion of locally-paid employees. So with that, we will be, you know, looking when we get home today and tomorrow and see where we are as far as the state budget. On the local budget, just to sort of refresh your memory, we're asking for about, or we asked for about $4.5 million in three different buckets, ongoing expenditures, new initiatives, and state-mandated initiatives, and those ongoing expenditures included the increases in the state-mandated employer-paid benefits, and also the replacement of our end-of-life The new initiatives, and that was the biggest item, $3.5 million, was the increase in the teacher supplements or certified employee salary supplements, an adjustment to the salary for our classified and central office personnel, some additional school choice options with Pleasant Ridge and the virtual middle school, achieving one-to-one mobile device ratio, and the professional development for K-8 teachers. And then, of course, we've talked a lot about the state-mandated initiatives with the changes in the K-3 class size ratios that'll go down by one this year, and it'll go down by two or three the following year. So we attended, several of us attended the county commissioners' meeting last, I think it was Tuesday, they did approve an appropriation of $47.8 million for the school system, that represents a $2.4 million increase over the previous year, so about half of what we were asking for, and they also are providing us $1.2 million in capital, and that's consistent with what we've received in capital for a number of years. So depending on the results of the state and how they reconcile between the two bodies in the General Assembly, we can use that $2.4 million for a number of positive things that we've asked for, such as covering the ongoing expenditures that we know are coming, continuing to increase our certified employee supplements, and I think the county commissioners recognized that they made a commitment to our teachers and have been working, you know, over the past three or four years to try to bring those salary supplements up to a more competitive level, so they've continued to step up and do that for $500,000 this year, which is about $185 per person, and also address some of the challenges that we have with our classified salary employees, continuing with our school choice options that we've decided to do for next year, and covering some of those expenses of hiring additional teachers with that unfunded mandate by the state with some of this local money, the $2.4 million. So with that, we would like to thank the Gaston County Board of Commissioners for stepping up and helping us address some of these problems, especially continuing their commitment to the teachers of Gaston County, so with that, we are thankful for them for that. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Any comments or questions from the board? I'd like to say, or just ask a question, Mr. Hoskins, as far as the classified employees, this is the first time, from both the state and the local funding, that these employees have got a raise in, is it eight years?
Since I've been here, I'm sure it's probably before '08, '07, when the recession hit, but certainly, it's the first time in the last four years.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain it's about eight years since those employees have had a raise, so that's, again.
Well needed.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Any other comments or questions? If none, Mr. Hoskins, we'll go to the next agenda item, the interim budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, about this time in June, right before June 30th, we do ask this board to approve an interim budget, which would consist of 80% of our current 2016-2017 budget, that would meet the state law requirements that we have an approved budget come June 30th. We do this because we do not yet have the state budget approved. Once we get that approved, we'll be able to ask for the final budget resolution, which will be 100% of our budget, so with that, we will ask that you approve an interim budget.
Okay, have a motion been missed by Mr. Dedman, a second by Mr. Ramsey. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. And Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes, yes.
And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins.
Yes, sir.
If you'll stay there, I think you have the next item.
All right, thank you, sir.
Out-of-county tuition.
Yes, sir, each year, about this time, in accordance with board policy 4150, we look at adjusting the out-of-county tuition that we assess to any students that do not live. the out-of-county tuition that we assess to any students that do not live in Gaston So, in accordance with this policy, there are some waivers for those students. And just to give you some color, we've got about three dozen students that come in from out-of-county, and about two dozen of those are paying students, and the other dozen have a waiver, probably because one of their parents works with the school system, but they live in Cleveland County or Lincoln County or somewhere. But this is a list of the criteria for waiving if they're living on a military base, if their parents plan to move to the district, or if there's some agreement with our LEA and the LEA where they live. So, with that, what we do every year is we look at our total local general fund appropriation, which was just over $49 million. We look at our ADM and come up with a local per pupil allocation. And in this, for this coming-up year, we base it on the current year numbers because we don't know the ADM and all those other numbers as of this moment, would be $1,564 for out-of-county tuition. Now, with that being said, if they're out of state, and I'm not really sure if we even have any, but I just mention this because we border South Carolina, the state of North Carolina's per pupil allocation is $5,418 for us. So, we would also ask that they reimburse us for that because that's not coming from the state of North Carolina for that student.
Do you know, do we have any of those?
I don't think we do. We have one, okay. And they may be on waiver. It could be that it could be a teacher that lives in York County that works here. I don't know that we have any that are paying. Oh, one, okay.
Would you go back to the list of waivers?
Yes, ma'am. While Ms. Roberts is taking notes, are there any questions or comments from the board regarding the out-of-state tuition? Out-of-county, I'm sorry. Out-of-county tuition. This is an action item, so I'll need a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Dedman, a second by Mr. Moore. Any more questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. If you will not go very far, I'll cover the next agenda item. The Gaston County, I'm sorry, the Gaston College Board of Trustees' appointment. This afternoon, the Board of Education interviewed applicants for the Gaston County, Gaston College Board of Trustees. The applicants were both outstanding and well-respected individuals in Gaston County. After interviewing them, we found that they were very eager to serve. The Board of Education elected Susan Riley as the candidate to serve the appointment for the Gaston County Board of Trustees. And I'd like to congratulate her and thank the board for their willingness to come early and interview and go through the process. Mr. Hoskins, the next item on the agenda is summer innovations projects.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Due to the fact that we are planning to open, or we will be opening, a new elementary school in August of this year, which is just over two months from now, and also summertime is, can be difficult to gather a quorum of the board, we are asking that this board allow the superintendent, along with the chairman of the board, to be able to approve any contracts that may come up prior to the next board meeting that are in excess of $100,000. If that is the case, then it would be brought to the operations committee and ratified by the board. So, this would be, we really want to get the existing Pleasant Ridge School down before school starts. So, preparation for the demolition of that school is going to be very timely. We think we have most of our life safety contracts already approved, but if something were to pop up or, you know, with some of the technology items. So, some of those can be large items and very timely action that we need in order to move on that. So, right now, I think we're in good shape, but then we've got everything approved. But this is really an insurance policy for us to make sure that we get that school opened on time.
Okay. This is an action item. Motion by Ms. Guthrie, second by Mr. Moore. Questions or discussion?
What's the limit, money limit on this, Mr. Hoskins?
If it's over $100,000, it has to go to the board. So, in this case, it would go to Mr. Booker and Mr. Collier, and then it would come back to operations committee for ratification and for board.
I have no problem with that whatsoever, but could we put a limit somewhere down the road? Because we'd like, I mean, if you called all of us, I mean, if it's $4 million, I wouldn't want Mr. Booker or Mr. Collier to have that responsibility.
Nor would Mr. Booker. We would not do that.
Nor do I want my name on that, Mr. Dedman.
I don't think you would either. I'm just saying. You know, we're just...
It's just the timing. I'm sorry, Ms. Guthrie. Let me say this, that the board is going to be informed of these things. It's just that we can't get together fast enough for a meeting. Any of these things will be ratified by a vote by this board. But anything, as far as good business practices, you will know beforehand what the dollars are. And instead of trying to call emergency meetings and notice the media 48 hours in advance in order to get these done so that school can start next year, this is something that typically we do for small projects. But with trying to take the school down this year, those could be more substantial dollars than they have been in the past. For example, asbestos abatement. We're waiting for a number there, and we don't have a number to present to this board tonight, but it needs to happen as fast as it can.
Mr. Chair, may I just say that it is pertinent that we give you that opportunity because that school needs to start on time. And I know that teachers are eager, just as eager to get in and to get organized before it's time for the children to come. So, we want the best for our district. We want the best for our schools, and we are, I think, we need to give you that opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. And I repeat that, especially the operations committee will be kept up with every dollar, every step of the way, and these will be ratified at the next meeting in July. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And that's unanimous.
Yes.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda. There's a lot of items on the consent agenda. I trust you've had time to read through and look through them. And I'll need a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Ushery, second by Ms. Cherry. I already got a comment from Mr. Booker on the consent agenda.
I just wanted to thank both committees. These line items look real nice and short there, but this is a lot of work by each of the committees, having presentations and discussion. I know the operations committee meeting that I attended two Fridays ago lasted almost three hours going through these and the discussion, and so I just appreciate the board's work and attention to these items.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Mr. Booker, that brings you to the superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Members of the board, I know our meeting is running long, and I'll keep my comments brief, but there's some just really important things. Saturday for our high school graduation ceremonies were just outstanding. We had excellent weather. School staffs had done a phenomenal job of preparing the sites, having great things for our 2,300 seniors in the class of 2017 to receive their diplomas. So, we should really take time to thank all those high school administrators for all the personal work they put and the efforts that go on it. And as Ms. Guthrie said in her opening prayer, the work of our families to support these seniors to get to where they are, and all the school staff. It is great that we have a tradition in this community that when you look on the stage at our graduations, you will see all the feeder school administrators on there. And it's really neat when you have one of them come and say, you know, "I was the elementary principal of the class that graduated this year prior to me serving somewhere else," and to see those kids come across. It's a reward to recognize that 13 years ago, for a lot of these children, they started in our schools, and it culminates on that day. So, I just thank everyone for what goes on. In the operations committee report that Mr. Moore gave, he talked about our energy management and trying to conserve energy wherever we can. A number of years ago, we adopted a summer work schedule, and that began this week, where our schools are open Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and they're closed Friday. So, that will run through Friday, August 11th. We will also be observing the Independence Holiday on July 4th. So, just want everyone to be aware of that as the schools are operating. But as Mr. Fields pointed out, the summer feeding program still operates on all days. And I hope you recognize 70 different locations is incredible and what we're doing in the community. So, I appreciate the work that they've done, and really to those feeding sites, because they have to go through qualification processes to be able to do it. And so, that's a great, another example of how our community steps up to help each other. But, you know, as we talk about all that, before you know it, it'll be August 28th, and one of those kids will be returning for our first academic year of the '17 and '18. So, we don't want to wish the summer away, but we look forward to that year. But we also hope that our students and teachers will take time to relax, refocus, and re-energize so that when we come back, believe it or not, in about 70 days... But y'all aren't counting that, are you? 70 days to get ready? But we want everyone to be ready. And before I close, another great item that we should take note of is, I have the pleasure of serving as the superintendent's liaison to the North Carolina School Public Relations Association. And our own Todd Hagens was just elected to serve as the vice president for them. And so, yes, that's worth it. So, we appreciate the work that he does for us, and his colleagues recognize that because that is a statewide election that he was... Somebody said, "Who made his plaque up?", right? That's true. But with all that, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. You see on our agenda that there's a need for closed session. We do not need to meet for consultation with our attorney, nor for property, but we do have a need to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, paragraph A64 personnel. It's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, second by Mr. Moore. All those in favor show by raising your hand. And Ms. Cherry, yes or no? Yes. And it's unanimous.
Yes.
And we are going into closed session.
All right, we are back in open session and we do have action after our executive session. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to make sure we clarify a couple of things. In your consent agenda, part of that was the contract renewals for 2017, 2018 for the employees who are eligible for one-year contracts and also employees who hold provisional or lateral entry license who are eligible for one-year contract. Those lists are published when the board book is, after all your motions reflected, so that will be there tomorrow. I would also like to request several motions tonight. First, the appointment of four assistant principals who receive two-year contracts: Bridget Best, Kelly Black, Will Buckenot, and Dr. James Potter.
Ms. Cherry?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept those appointments as Mr. Booker read.
All right, motion by Ms. Cherry. Second, by Ms. Guthrie. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And it's unanimous. Mr. Booker.
Okay, next, for our principals, four-year contracts for the following individuals: Dr. Amy Holbrook, Kelly Howell, Loretta Reed, Lucretia Rice, and Dr. Smith.
Okay, motion by Mr. Dedman, second by Ms. Cherry. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Mr. Booker.
The third motion is the appointment of a new two-year principal contract for Andrea Meyer.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, oh, sorry.
Okay, that's a motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Ramsey. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Members of the board, just to summarize the actions, for our next school year, the principal at HH Beam Elementary will be Dr. Lee Smith. The principal at Chapel Grove Elementary will be Chad Carper. The principal at McAdenville Elementary will be Lucretia Rice. The principal at WC Friday Middle School will be Andrea Meyer. The principal at Forestview High School will be Crystal Hauser.
Grove Elementary will be Chad Carper, the principal at McAdenville Elementary will be Lucretia Rice, the principal at WC Friday Middle School will be Andrea Meyer, the principal at Forestview High School will be Crystal Hauser. Thank you.
During our closed session, we had an evaluation of the superintendent. To sum things up, we had high marks from all the board members for our superintendent, and I'm just going to make a few brief comments. Mr. Booker sets an esteemed example of leadership, long hours of hard work, commitment to improving education, and his integrity as both a person and superintendent. Mr. Booker has established real working relationships with the faith-based community, the business community, the county manager and his staff, as well as the county commissioners. Gaston County Schools CTE programs and graduation success, as well as the highly successful additions of school choice options, are testaments to his vision and ability to work with both the business community and parents to change Gaston County schools to meet the demands of education in the world as it changes. And we are all honored to have Mr. Booker as our superintendent. This pretty much sums up our evaluations of him. And we also discussed a contract extension. Ms. Cherry?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make this motion, I'd like to make a motion to extend the contract through June 30th of 2021 for the following: W. Jeffrey Booker, Dr. Melissa Balknight, Cindy Mattson, Dr. Kim Maddox, and Sonya McGraw.
Okay, a motion, second by Ms. Guthrie. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Mr. Booker. And that concludes our meeting. Mr. Ushry had a birthday earlier this month. Happy belated birthday to Mr. Ushry. I think he has some happy birthday cupcakes back there that are very, very limited.
(Laughter)
So with that, I'd like to thank the board for all their work. We've had special meetings lately, and I appreciate your patience and your dedication for the children of Gaston County. With that, Mr. Dedman.
I'd make a motion that we...
A motion to adjourn by Mr. Dedman, second by Mr. Ramsey. All those in favor, show by raising your hand. Ms. Cherry, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, and we are adjourned.